This morning and gave us a breath of life. Thank you, Lord, that we get to call this great nation, United States of America, home, Lord, and that we can come to you in a place like this, open forum, and we have the freedoms to seek you out openly and freely, Lord. And, Lord, we're just thankful that we get to live in this great county, Hart County. Lord, we just ask you to be with us tonight as we conduct county business, be with each and every one of us here, commissioners, Lord. We just ask for your wisdom, give us discernment, Lord, as we conduct county business. We ask your safety, a blanket of safety put over all of us tonight as we head home from this meeting. And we pray for everybody in this county, Lord, and thank you for everything that you bless upon us and give us every day. And thank you, Lord, for sending your son, Jesus Christ, to die for our sins. And we ask this all in his precious name. Amen.
Amen.
Let's all stand for our pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for that. We'll call to order the October the 14th Board of Commissioners meeting at this time. And first of all, I'd like to welcome each one of you here tonight. I'd like to welcome those that may be watching on HTC Channel 3 and those that may be watching on YouTube, Hart County Board of Commissioners channel. We welcome all of you. This is your county. This is your government. We work for you. So I just want you to understand that. First of all, we need to approve the agenda. We've got a lengthy agenda, but maybe we can get this thing done.
I have no additions.
You know additions? Anyone else see anything? If not, can we get a motion to approve the agenda that's printed?
Same way.
Motion by Commissioner Teasley.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. This is a five-o vote. All right, then we'll move on to the September the 23rd regular minutes. Do we have any additions, corrections to those? If not, can we get a motion to approve?
Same way.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Teasley, second by Commissioner Bennett. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. This is a five-o vote. We'll move on to the minutes of September the 30th. It was a called meeting, which is a resolution to, so we could still spend money without having our budget done for the end of the year, but we'll get all that taken care of tonight. Any additions, corrections to those minutes?
Motion approved, called meeting now, 30, 20, 25.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bennett, second by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. This is a five-o vote. All right, we'll move on to remarks by invited guest committees. We do have Chris Dills from LNCO, and they'll be coming in presenting a road study plan. And we, Terrell and I met with Mr. Dills a few weeks back over in Madison County, and we looked at some stuff they were doing, and so I asked them if they would come and present a presentation to the board.
All right, well, thank you, Chairman and Board, for having us today. I'm Aaron Wadley with LNCO Engineering, soon-to-be TerraVia Engineering, rebranding, not being purchased or anything. But I work with local government, small local government, rural counties, small cities, and work in pavement management and stormwater management and public works management. I started working with Chris Dills many years ago. I was the Transportation and Public Works Director at Newton County. Chris Dills was the area engineer at GDOT for us, and he helped me out tremendously with his knowledge of pavement preservation, alternative construction techniques, and also GDOT funding. There's particular metrics you have to make to get quick response funding and different things that can help you with some projects, especially emergency projects, which we had plenty of back then. Many years, fast forward many years later, I began managing a large firm's Georgia branch. And as soon as I heard Chris Dills was about to retire, I hired him because I wanted to work with him. He and I have worked together since then. I've since stepped out of my own, become the principal in LNCO, TerraVia, and I work with Chris Dills quite often on pavement projects with my clients. And I want to talk to you just briefly about the value of a plan, particularly a road rating and how it can help you out as commissioners and help staff out. So most, most road projects, they get paved because staff sees, sees an issue. We need to pave this road. Or you get knocked on the door, hey, I'm Betty Sue, I need, our road's in really bad shape. If you like me, you'll, you'll pave my road. It's the worst road in the county. And then you got Joe Smith on the other side of your district comes and says, hey, I need you to pave my road. It's the worst road in the county. And then some of the staff comes in and says, we got to pave this road. It's the worst road in the county. And in actuality, every road, the road to spend the most time on tends to be the worst road in the county because we see all the little, all the little details, all the potholes, all the issues. There's probably a different worst road in the county somewhere. If you have a plan, and what this is, Chris will go into the technique that we'll use to rate the road and, and how it can, some of the technology and the map you'll get. You'll actually see, in what I just handed out, the second page has a map from Madison County. Chris and I had created that, actually at a different firm, but it would be a similar map that you would, very small, so, sorry. Couldn't print out anything bigger tonight, but it's just a color-coded heat map. Says this is a A, this is a D, this is a C, but it would be a numeric grade on that. So when Joe Smith comes and knocks on your door and says, hey, I have the worst road in the county, you can say, well, actually, you don't. Your road was a, was a 75. We've got 20 other roads, 20 other miles that are 60 and below, and we have to pave those. We have to take care of those. Or we've got these other roads that we can preserve right now. If we spend less money, we can preserve these roads, make them last longer. But we have a list and we expect to get to you next year. So it's, it's the first step in creating a plan that you can program out one year, two years, five years later. I don't recommend taking a rating more than five years because our wet cycles are getting really bad and roads are changing a lot quicker than they used to. But if you can, if you can do a rating every three to five years, the money you spend on the rating will return in the value you get with, with the final product because it allows you to program the right product. And Chris will talk about some, some of the different paving, pavement preservation techniques that he's used and, and I've used as well. And it can also, you can also make sure that you have the right treatment for, for that area, whether you need to do any base remediation, deep patching, that kind of thing. So, Chris, if you'll come up, just talk a little bit about that. I know he's got a program, he's ready to present. We'll try to be brief because we're engineers and we can be very boring, but...
But, I said, my name is Chris Dills. I said, I have my own company, it's called Pavement Preservation Techniques. I started it when I retired from Georgia DOT. Had 30 years with Georgia DOT. My, you know, when I worked in Athens for, just a little background, I worked in Athens for about 18 years out of Athens office. And like you got your carntral office up here, that's where I was at for the majority of my career. I went to Gwinnett County for six, and then in 2013, I became the L-MIG Coordinator. And, and I worked with John Kami and them under L-MIG for about a year and a half. And then I went to District Two, was the area engineer down there. That's when I met Aaron with Newton County at the time and the chairman. We, we were doing a lot of products then with quick response and everything else. And then in 2016, Georgia passed the HB 170 bill, which basically was a maintenance bill to give maintenance projects, give the maintenance office a little bit more funding, basically from your hotel tax and some of that stuff. That's where the money came from. And that's when I got into all the pavement preservation side on the maintenance part of the house with, with DOT. And that's where I found, basically finished up my career the last four years with that. And during that time is when I started using all these different pavement preservation techniques and things like that to, to extend the mileage that we had when I worked for DOT. Just to, when I worked there, like in District Two, we had 6,600 lane miles to maintain throughout that district. It's 27 counties. Like District One up here is 21 counties when I worked up here. So, you know, with that, with our state budget that we had for capital resurfacing and everything, we were, we were only getting by just basically patching and paving, we were only getting about up for $25 to $30 million. We were only getting, on average, about 150 lane miles a year. So when you take 150 lane miles and you got 6,600 to maintain, you do the math. You're not going to get very far. So that's where the pavement preservation stuff came in, the different, using different techniques. And when we started doing that, we were spending about 12 to 14 million dollars a year, and we were getting 350 to 400 lane miles by doing all kinds of different techniques, whether it's chip seals, micros, thin lift overlays, crack seals, you name it, we were doing it because we had to, we were trying to protect those state routes that you drive on every day. And, and then that led me to here when I retired and started working with different counties. I said, started working with Aaron, doing road ratings and doing some county projects. Like I said, right now, at, over the last four years, I've been working with Madison County, your neighbor next door, with Todd Higdon and the chairman down there and his commissioners. And basically what I do is I look after, I take care of all their T-splash because they pass T-splash. We did the road rating, and that helped them pass the T-splash for the citizens to look at, to see, hey, we do have a plan and we have a goal. That's what this is all about, this road rating for y'all, is once the road rating's complete and everything, you'll have that map to look at, to share with, with your citizens in the county to say, hey, look, this is where we raped, and, and this is what we're looking at, and this is the, and that's what we do in Madison. We, we look at those roads. We don't do worse first, and we don't do, you know, we, there's a lot of roads that what we call in the middle ranges there where when you do certain techniques, you can extend the life of that, of that, of that road. You know, most of them, the stuff that we've seen, the stuff I did with DOT, you know, we spent, we, we can extend the life, you know, eight to 10 years where the normal life of a road is 12 to 15, but you're spending about twice the money to, to do that patching in full overlays where some roads need it, some roads don't. And that's where this information from the road rating and then, you know, somebody who understands what this information is can help you, you know, put your stuff together. That's what, I said, that's what I do for Madison, is I help, I take their, they give me my budget, and we take the road list from the, the road rating that we done, and we look at that and we say, okay, this is what we need. When I first went there, they were, they were the typical county when I was doing L-MIG. And all that's one reason I started this, because I seen how the cities and the counties with, you know, if you don't have to splotch, as y'all know, you, you know, you're, you're limited in your funds that you have from, from DOT, you know. And so, you know, like with them, they were getting, you know, about eight to 10 miles a year done. So when you got, when you're only getting eight to 10 miles and you've got 500 centerline miles, almost 1,000 lane miles to cover, there again, you're, you're looking at 100 gears before, before you get every road in the county paved. So that's where some of this stuff comes into play in the road rating part of it. Will it be a tool for you to share with your citizens, once you have it, to say, this is why we're doing what we're doing, and using the other techniques to, like I said, you know, do some stuff that will extend the life of that road so you don't have to spend as much money on it. And then later on, when you go back to do something to it, you'll spend less money because that's what we found out with DOT and everything I was doing there for those four or five years. It's, you know, you're, you're getting that benefit of that, extend the life of that road. So when you go back to it later on, eight or 10 years down the road, you won't have to spend a bunch of money on that road. I said, that, that's the big thing with the, with the, with the road rating there, so...
May I come? Yeah, Miss Sittin' Out.
So with Madison County, they tell you their budget, and you tell them what road needs, what, this is what you need to do this year.
That's correct. What I do is I, I said, I know what the budget is every year from what T-splash is, what L-MIG is. And so basically, what I've done is to make life simple for the L-MIG Coordinator and to make life simple for Madison County, what we do is, is we take our L-MIG money, and when we go to, every year we go to apply for it, when it comes due in, in July, we have, we already have our list of roads of what we want to do. And then what I do is I use the L-MIG money to basically patch with. I tell the L-MIG Coordinator, hey, when we send in that, that thing, I'm using all my L-MIG money to patch with because I have T-splash.
One more question. Do they, do they ever get outside of your recommendations?
At times, yes. If, you know...
Yeah, typically, you would, we'd have some recommendations as the engineer, but we would also hear from you as the commissioner, we'd hear from staff, because you need a whole picture. A road may be at a certain place, a certain score that needs to be resurfaced, but there may be a more, a more important road that needs to be resurfaced first. And, and you guys are the local ones, you have your, your ear to the ground, you know, you know what's going on. Staff knows what's going on.
Well, a lot of that will lead you to the traffic flow as well, the road may be as well.
Absolutely. Traffic flow definitely plays into it a lot. A busier road is going to last much shorter time and needs to be resurfaced first. But we typically would come armed with our recommended list, hear from you, hear from staff, and then come back based on budget. This is what you should do.
Or what you can do.
When you need a final time, what you can do. That's, that's usually what it comes down to. This is what you can do. And it takes, there's a, it's gotten expensive. So with patching and resurfacing, you can be up to a quarter million dollars a mile, centerline mile. It just, money doesn't go very far. Now, through some pavement preservation techniques, Morgan County, we're getting, we're going just above 200,000 a mile now. And it's just managing the thickness of the asphalt and the, being very specific on, on what type of asphalt to use, what additives to use. And what Chris is doing with Madison County, same thing, using the, the micro to augment that, that driving surface and save some money to try to, try to crawl under 200,000 per mile. But there's other pavement preservation techniques, like double chip seal that, that can be $65, $70,000 a mile. But they have to be, they have to be used on the right road. You can't just, nothing can be used on every road. So, so every road needs a specific treatment.
Okay. So before we, while we had a break, I've got several questions. You had mentioned a one-year plan, five-year plan. Okay, you put together that plan, those, that list of roads. You publish that publicly. People are going to hold you accountable to that list of roads. You don't have the money to, to do that list of roads. I'm just telling, I've been on the board 25 years. I'm not, not trying to say one thing or the other. We went away from that because we didn't feel like, we didn't want people to be misled. We actually had a road study years ago, so, when John Kami was here. So a one-year cycle, a one-year plan, a five-year plan, if you can't do those roads in that one, that's only your one-year plan, you don't have the money, or the two-year, the three-year, four-year. We all know, and I think you guys will agree with me, what's on the list as the worst road this year may not necessarily be the worst road next year. What's it going to cost to maintain this list?
Yeah, it's, it's...
And how frequently would you do it?
So that, that's probably a different question based on, on what do you want the contract to look like? So I think what we're talking about today is, is the study itself, the, the road rating.
But you got to maintain that to keep your data up to date.
Maintaining the list would require ongoing, an ongoing agreement, which professional services agreement for engineering, they don't require any special procurement in Georgia. And so we can do that, and we can do an on-call as needed that doesn't require anything other than, hey, we need you right now, let's talk about this. Or staff can maintain the list. And it doesn't have to be a public list either. It can be just internal management. But the, the ideal is that you would definitely be able to do roads year one. You don't put a list out that you can't do. So, so you...
I understand.
Designed a budget, stuff happens. Patching sometimes can go way over, and you find out you have to augment funds or cut back on what you're doing. I've, I've cut roads out, people get mad. Got to put it on next year's list so it bumps things. So you have to, there's an education piece to it that this is our, this is our list to plan by. Everything's subject to change though. So it, it's best, it's best to stay in touch. If, if you want us as the consultant to manage the list, I mean, obviously, I, I think that's the best plan, but it, it requires an ongoing relationship to do that. And that's easy to do.
So my question, my question is quantify the cost to update and maintain this list. Say, every two years? Is just greater than...
Would you want a new rating or ju, or just a list?
Well, you got to keep your data current. Now, I'm trying to quantify the cost is what I'm trying to do.
Yeah.
And then there's a second part of this question, depending on what your answer is that I'm going to ask. And it's not a got you, but it's, it's a state law question. If it's more than $100,000, we're required to publicly bid it.
It's, it's 250 now.
No, it's not. It's 100,000.
For a public works project?
Yes.
Okay.
So you guys may recommend it, and we bid it, and you're not a low bidder. Say, you're $50,000 more than a low bidder. It puts us in a precarious position.
So, so we're professional services.
I understand.
That's, that's not a bid.
Public works project. Still a public works project.
Engineering, engineering's exclusive of, of, of construction. If you, there's engineering law to it.
But if your company's going to do the list and do the work...
We don't do the work. We do, we, we would just do, we would just do the list. We do the recommendation, we do the oversight.
Still think it's going to comply with the public works law.
But construction has to fall under public works law.
I agree.
Professional services do not. It's legal and engineering services do not. You can ask your attorney about it.
She's sitting right there. I don't want to put her on the spot tonight.
But it's, it's, they're, they're different animals on there, so...
Well, that was my, that was my point earlier because I was asking you basically, it comes back to this board. You're working off recommendations, man? In that answer, the second part of my question.
But I'm just trying to quantify the cost and understand all the, the things about...
Right.
I would have loved to have some of this information to look at before tonight because I didn't get it until we, we got here today.
Yeah, well, the, what we handed out was, that's just the proposal we submitted with the...
I understand. I'm just trying to quantify costs.
With the procurement that was, and it's mostly gone away, so I, I gave you guys the whole thing. I know right now you're just looking at rating, and that's fine, but to quantify costs, we've got to have a scope, and, and I'm happy to sit down and discuss that and have something for y'all to look at, to quantify those costs. And it's kind of like the road rating, the, the man changes the cost a little bit, so it's, it would be a guideline, generally speaking, over a five-year period.
So we have a lot of secondary roads in this county.
Yes.
And we have a lot of poultry houses.
Yeah.
We have a lot of logging operations that go on. And we all know these trucks are running, 80,000 pounds is not the weight limit anymore.
Yes.
I mean, these things are getting on up there.
Yeah.
A lot higher. And while these roads are not...
Been burned on a few roads that we've paved in Morgan County and had logging operations immediately after. It's, it's an issue. Staying on top of those permits and trying to, as best you can, manage what you're paving this year compared, comparison to the permits that are out there. Sometimes permits will come right after you pave. You can't do a lot about that, but just trying to stay on top of, of what is out there. Poultry, poultry houses and agricultural, in general, is going to be an issue. That doesn't change, that's consistent. And we know those roads will have more degradation than other roads because those manure wagons are very heavy.
My, my point here is you could have a road that's in good shape today and have 10 poultry houses built, and within two years, that thing be fully complete.
Yeah.
Alligator cracking everywhere.
Or, or one wet winter changes it a lot too.
And a lot of these secondary roads do not have adequate base under them to do this. So how, how would you address that from a pavement treatment standpoint?
So I can tell you what we're doing in Morgan County right now.
Other than you're building old roads.
They're one of my clients. Most roads have two inches or less asphalt on top of, can be a sand clay base.
Some have topsoil.
Can be soil cement, can be just soil. And what you find, especially as you get towards, down towards the lakes, areas get really wet, as you patch, the road starts falling apart. That's where you can have cost increase. And that's, it's kind of a triage when you get there. But what we typically will do is patch what's there, go about two inches on patching. If it's really bad, we'll go down to four inches deep on patching and try to bridge over those areas. In general, it works pretty well. I've had good success even in high agriculture areas where they're running heavy equipment every day. But Chris deals with the same, with the same thing in Madison County. Maybe able to talk a little bit more about that.
Well, I got a couple of questions for Chris before we move on. You mentioned the hotel tax being used for roads. Did I understand that right?
And when they passed the HB 170, every time you make a, at that time, and it's still, because it was a 10-year thing, under the HB 170, for that, for that, the state maintenance dollar that we were using, five, every time you went, you booked a hotel, $5 of that went into that fund. And then it's, it's that fund plus some other funds that, that come out of HB 170 that gave DOT those extra maintenance dollars that we didn't have.
This is your, this is your...
This is a state level, not a county level.
Right. This, this, that was at a state level.
I want to make sure that, that, because we can't use hotel tax money for roads.
I think he was just referring to it.
That's why I wanted to get the clarification.
He was just referring to his previous work.
Yeah, I just wanted to get the clarification because I said for roads.
And for, for you, for the road rating, like I said, what this did for Madison County, Grand County, Monroe County, City of Statham, that, when we did this, that way, when you go to put T-splash on the mallet, you'll have this tool to show with the different colors, just like the way we put in the proposal, you wanted it per, you put, put in the proposal per DOT ratings. That's what I'm going to give you. I'm going to give you how DOT rated our state routes and what we've done with the counties. We changed that rating just a little bit because counties, county roads and city roads and all, they're a little bit different from state routes. So what we've done is we've modified the number range. There's different, you know, these different companies out here, look, when we first got into this, I checked into this. I mean, coming from DOT, I knew how we rated roads. The, all these roads, these companies, they come in with LiDAR or some type of, of system that, what, they, the people, they come out and they write it, and they send it in, they, the computers do the work, and it's a guess. It's just a, you know, those computers, they, they determine from what they seen from the cameras and the different things. But the good thing about it is DOT went to that. When I first, when we were rating roads, I had, I had six areas, I had six different maintenance foremen or superintendents that went out and rated. Each person with the same information would rate a road differently. The same, we could write, we could all write the same road and you'd rate it differently. With the systems that we have now, and DOT went to that, we, they, they have a company now called Pathways that rides every state route every year. They, they ride their roads every year and they get that rating. It lets us know, hey, what we, what, the, the, all the different things that we've done, have we made improvements or have, have we lost, or what are... we lost, or whatever the case may be. And, and with this system that you have, not only you, you, with my experience with the, what we're gonna use with the cameras, and then what I see on the road, is I'm gonna give you, at the time of that rating, I'm gonna give you what is out there on that road, and gi- and give you that proper rating, where there's other different ratings out there that use ash toe and all that, those scales are like from zero to a hundred, okay? This scale basically is zero to a hundred to a point, but what we've done is, with the color management, we've taken how DOT rates the roads, okay, how, how, how we did that, and I take that program, with this program, and I've changed it a little bit to where, used to with DOT routes, anything that was below a seventy on a DOT road was failing, okay? What I've done is I've brought that down a little bit for the, the cities and the counties to a sixty, okay? And what you'll have is we'll have it broken down into basically four categories. You'll have, you know, if it's, um, if it's during, let's see, I think we use blue, green, yellow, and red, okay? This was, this map here was the City of Stateum that we done, uh, that, that, one of the last road ratings I did, uh, with this, with this new system that mimics DOT. Like I said, we changed it for, for them. You get these, uh, the ma- I said, the, if a road is blue, that mean the road, basically what we know, we said from a hundred to ninety, this is where the road is. If it's green, we did from ninety to seventy-five. Uh, from seventy-five to sixty was a road that was starting to need a quite, starting to need a quite a bit of work. Um, it rode, it, it was in a yellow, and then anything in red, which would be a sixty and below, if that's how you want it done, we can adjust that, however you would like it. Um, but, and, and everything, but that, that tells you any road in red is actually a failing route. That means, basically, when it gets to that point, you're probably paving over half to three-fourths of the road, as far as patching goes, and you are, or you're gonna have to reclaim that road. That's, once a road gets there, that's, you know, and that's what this map is gonna tell you, when, when you do this road rating, it's gonna give you that. So, like I said, if you wanna go to, to, to your citizens to pass a T-Splash, that was one of the best things, you know, uh, Madison County will tell you, uh, having this tool, going out and doing, uh, some town halls and stuff, showing it, showing what the roads are, uh, you know, this rating can go, it, it can go a little further than just this map, and, you know, you can get into, you know, cost, but, you know, cost changes every year, okay? I mean, that's what I, even with Madison County, you know, I can tell you, when I left DOT five years ago, in 2020, my last year, I was paying, uh, a dollar ten to a dollar fifteen a square yard for chip seals. I was paying a dollar fifteen, dollar twenty for micros. Now, five years later, I'm paying, we're paying double that. I mean, I, I just, I just found out from Ma- Madison County today, the chairman, when I stopped by to see them for a minute before I came here, GAB just, is fixing to go up twenty-eight dollars a ton. It was seven dollars a ton four years ago. It's over, you know, it's, so, you know, these costs are going up, so, but by having the rating, and with DOT, this is the way we looked at it, with DOT, when we got a rating, when you would go back and do a rating, at every year, when we did it yearly, we found out that most of our state routes, depending on where it was at, the, you know, if it rated, say, say it rated a ninety-five last year, most of the time when that rating was done, when it was done, the next year, that road changed anywhere from three to five points, depending on the weather and depending on that route. But, but on, each road lost around five points a year. That, with, with, that's how the ratings are done. So, you know, like I said, for counties, you don't necessarily have to do it yearly, uh, you know, it's really, you know, it's not cost effective for you, but three to five years, you could, 'cause you can take whatever that rating was, and, you know, when we get done with the rating, and you got roads that rated, like I said, a ninety-five, but four years later, that road probably rates a seventy-five. You see what I'm saying? It, it's, it's gonna lose five points a year, so twenty points. So then, that road, it puts you, that road, that road that rated ninety-five five years ago may rate a, a, a seventy-five to eighty, well, you're in that range of, you know, you gotta look at what I wanna do to that road, because if it keeps going, the further down the line it goes, and there's studies on it, and, you know, I've got some things, but, you know, that road, the longer you wait to do something to it, it's just, it, it's, it's always been that way. It's, I mean, what we do is, it's not rock, rocket scientists, to be fair and honest with you, but knowing what to do to that road from these ratings, and working with, with y'all, and Terrell, and, and, uh, and the road department, by doing all that, you can determine where's the best bang for the buck on, on, on that. That's what the rating's gonna help you do. It's gonna give you that tool to look at and say, because I, I can tell you, if you try to go and you try to fix all those red roads, you'll never have enough money. I don't, I don't care if you pass T-Splash. It is, it, you'll never have enough money. Like I said, Madison County, we went from a seventy-five year to eighty year with the way they were going, with the money they had at the time, they were looking at a seventy-five to eighty year before they could get to pave every road. Right now, with what we're doing, with T-Splat, T-Splash passed, and using the road ratings, using the different techniques, doing the different things, uh, throughout the county, right now, we're averaging, we've averaged fifty to fifty-five lane miles a year. So with that, with the number of lane miles we have, right now, we're on trajectory to pave every road in that county, if we wanted to, if, if we keep the funding, we could pave every road in that county in eighteen years, fifteen to eighteen years. So, that's where this comes in, that's where you, you do this. Like I said, three to five years later, you, once you, you know, you get the funding, and you come up with stuff, and you're able to do a little bit more, you go back, you do another road rating, it shows, it shows you what you've accomplished, or, you know, if, if anything's been the right thing. Uh, and, and you can use that to determine whether e- everything's worth it or not. You know, that, that's, that's the big, that's the tool of it, uh, and for, for you to be able to use when you're, when you're taking this and using some of the best practices. Uh, you know, like I said, in Madison County, we, you know, we do, we do a lot of roads that fall within that seventy-five to eighty range, because they're at that point, if I wait till they're a seventy to sixty, then I know that that road is gonna cost me, as far as patching, it's gonna cost me twice as much to do. Where if I catch that road just two or three years early, I don't have as much patching to do at that time. I go in there, and I do, I use the right product, whatever that may be. You know, I'm not set on, you know, the chairman down there and a few others, they will take, we, we're not on just one product. It's, it's what's best for the whole. I, I look at, you know, with DOT and seeing the funding, knowing where that was when I was in L-MIG and everything, that's one of the reasons I started and, started what I did, and doing what I'm doing, is, you know, hey, it's my tax dollars to, you know, I, you know, with, with, and, and everything else, and I'm gonna take whatever budget you can give, whatever that budget is, we're gonna take it, we're gonna take those dollars, and we're gonna say, okay, well, hey, that, that road that's yellow, if we don't do anything to it, two years from now, that's gonna be a failing road, where I could go in, do a little bit of patching, do a chip, do a micro, do a thin lift overlay. Uh, and that's where, when you have T-Splash, it allows you to, because you're not, because under L-MIG, you, you have certain criteria, the specifications and all that to follow, but when it's your local dollars, just like the, when it was with the maintenance with the HB 170, we still follow the specs as far as the, to stay in line with that, but it gave us leeway to use other techniques that we didn't have in the past. And, and that's where, if you, if you get T-Splash to pass, you, it'll give you leeway to do other techniques that, that sometimes you can't do with L-MIG money, because you have to do certain things with that. And that's, that's where we come into play, and, and, you know, and say, hey, look, you know, we can do this, and we're using our T-Splash, that's what I do in Madison County. Uh, you know, I still follow the specifications, I put the specifications out there in those, in their contracts, but we use those different techniques to extend the life of that road, and, hey, if I save five to eight thousand dollars a mile, per mile, and I'm doing fifty lane miles a year, that's another, that's another three or four, you know, that, that's another three or four miles that I can do that same year, where if I just do the typical, that's what I'm gonna get. That's what, and that's what you're gonna get, you're gonna get the typical.
Well, just for, just for clarity, we have a viewing audience, audience here, it's way we're on TV.
Yes, sir.
Just for clarity, when you say lane mile, that's one lane, when you say center line, that's both lines.
That's right.
So, so when you was giving the example of fifty-five to sixty miles, actually, if we have a center line, then you're bound to twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
That's right.
Actual center line miles.
Center line miles, that's right.
Yeah, I got you. That was just for clarity for our audience and everybody that's watching.
Yeah.
Now, that's a good point. I appreciate you saying that.
Yeah.
Uh, I did have a question. There was one of these examples that, um, you guys, I don't know if you wrote a letter, or if you just helped in obtaining these funds, but it, it seemed like it wasn't L-MIG, it was somewhere else. Didn't know if you guys.
Quick response funding.
Okay.
Um, so I, I've helped a, a few of my clients, um, get quick response funding. Mor- Morgan County had a flood, um, three years ago, I believe.
Lane.
And, uh, they had bridge damage on, on several, several bridges. We got, um, did a, an engineer's estimate, looked at the most cost-effective ways to repair it, and then got, got quick response funding from GDOT to help, help pay for that. And it actually paid for the majority of the work. Um, Social Circle, they had the same thing. They had a, a culvert that blew out, and, um, was about to take the road out. It was just in somebody's yard at that time. We were able to get quick response funding to repair that project. Um, and, and GDOT's, that, sometimes they, they, they hold that money back. Um, sometimes they, they spend a lot of it. So I, I've seen them pay for the entire project, I've seen them pay for a portion of the project. Um, Wana Grove was able to get some quick response funding for, for a culvert repair project. They had, um, a four-hundred-foot long culvert that had just hadn't been maintained. It, it fell apart underground, started getting sinkholes. Um, but it was under a road, it was one way in, one way out, um, like many of the lake roads. So GDOT said, all right, well, we'll pay a little bit of money towards that. It wasn't, it wasn't a lot, but it was, it was a little bit. Every little bit helps when you have a small budget. Um, and that was Chris's specialty when he was at GDOT for a time. He was the L-MIG coordinator, helped get that money. He helped me when I was at Newton County get quick response funds for emergency projects. It's gotta be the right project, it's gotta be, uh, have an economic impact, um, it's gotta affect emergency access, emergency vehicles, or benefit education. The three E's is what they say. Um, so you've gotta show how, how it benefits those three E's to, to get those funds, and they're subject to the, uh, grant administrator, and ultimately, uh, Russell McMurray has to sign off on them.
So that's, and Morgan County, did, did Morgan County get you guys to do it because they didn't have a public works director?
Yeah, so I, I'm, uh, Morgan County's on-call engineer. Uh, they have a public works director now, um, since they did then as well, but he had less engineering experience. Um, but I, I'm their on-call engineer, and whenever they have an issue like that, they, they call me out. And, uh, I, I'll go look at the project. Um, I just got a call today about a culvert that's got issues, and I have to go out and talk to the property owners and make recommendations. And a, a lot of it is not the engineering solution, because that can be big and expensive, but the best value solution, approaching it as the client's saying. In, in this situation, we can probably replace the pipe as is, even though it's a little small for what's going into it. Um, it only floods once every ten years, that's probably gonna be acceptable for this road, you know, kinda making those judgment calls to keep the project from just lowering a budget.
We actually got one of those projects a few years ago, Faber Tech's that side lane right there. That was a quick response project. I think at the time, it was two hundred thousand dollars or less was the cost.
Terrell will tell you, I mean, I mean, he worked, I know he worked with Skip, the, your L-MIG coordinator now, you know, I work with him closely. I talked to him today. Uh, you know, in, in, in Madison County, you know, there was SAP money, with safety money. I know y'all were talking about striping a couple of, uh, uh, I heard y'all talking about on your, when I was watching your YouTube thing, you know, there's extra money out there, and having these, with, with, with us, having some of these connections that, I mean, Terrell's got them and all that, but, you know, like Skip, I can call and say, hey, uh, you know, keep me in mind, you know, I mean, like the three E's he was talking about, the, you know, Madison County's putting Ag Building in, they're wanting to widen this little short road that runs right beside the Ag Building. Uh, you know, they were gonna fund it themselves. I said, let's put in for, you know, the three E's, economic development, education, and emergency. We, we, we got a price up for it, we turned it, we turned in what we, what we thought was gonna take. It went downtown, they approved it. Guess what? They gave us seventy, seventy cents on the dollar, okay? So that seventy cents that DOT gave you, that if you don't ask for it, sometimes you don't get it, then it comes out of your citizens, in your pocket. So, you know, these, these things, these, these, the things that we can help with.
Perks.
And, and everything else, you know, it, it's, it, it, it takes care of itself, you know, I mean, when you can get, I mean, just in Madison, uh, this year, between the SAP money, some emergency money and everything else, we, we've just gotten one point two million dollars from L-MIG to do some of this extra work with, that if we hadn't have put some stuff together and sent it down, or, you know, them coming to us and like, just like the striping, well, guess what? I'm not having to use my L-MIG or my T-Splash dollars to stripe with. They, they sent us a list of roads that was on that. We looked at that list. That list fell within the road ratings and the stuff that we were doing. So guess what? Now, instead of, instead of spending a quarter of a million to three hundred thousand dollars on the striping for that fifty to fifty-five lane miles, twenty-five to twenty-seven center line miles, however you wanna say it, we were able to get the funding to basically for next year's L-MIG and T-Splash, I've got, I got enough money to cover all my striping, which in turn allowed me to add about another five, five miles. That's where all this comes in handy.
So who are you getting to do your striping? Because we've already, we got a half-million dollar grant. We can't get them to do anything. It's already been awarded. Tell them, am I right?
Same company does the striping for everybody, right?
Yeah. So how are you getting all this done? Well, we, we're sitting here with a half-million dollars already awarded, been awarded for months and can't get it done.
Well, the, the thing is, is you have Peak, you, right now, what happened was Peak went in and bought a lot of the local, small striping outfits. That, that were really good. And, uh, like this year, we got Midstate, Midstate come in, um, and they are striping, I mean, Garrett's doing our, was doing our painting this year, APS come in and did, uh, the roads that we decided not to overlay, the roads that we were using micro on, they, you know, they used Midstate this year. Uh, we had issues with Peak and, you know, uh, last year, and so I told the contractors then, hey, if you can, if, you know, it's still a low bid, of course, but if you can find somebody, and, and they did, they, they called around, because they're so used to just, hey, they put it out there, Peak gets it, and you have issues, or you have a hard time, um.
You know, I'll say, in, with, uh, my Morgan County contracts, we've documented issues in the past with strippers, and, and we, we've precluded certain strippers because of those issues. Um, and we just put that in the contract that they're a precluded firm.
Yeah. But I'm trying to basically do most of my striping through either my L-MIG and my T-Splash. That way, the con- that, when, when it goes out, then that contractor is responsible for, and so far, basically, besides some minor issues, it gets done. Now, when you're putting out just a striping contract, sometimes, like I said, you'll put it out for bid, somebody'll get it, and, but guess what? The, the unfortunate part is, is you are the low, I don't care how much it is, you're the low man on the total pole, because DOT's got all, DOT has let, you know, they, you know, they got contracts for nothing but striping, and guard rail, and all these different things, and Peak and them have those contracts, and they gotta go there before they come to see you. So, you know, that's where you go in with your contracts, and you put timeframes in there, you put liquidated damages in there, and you just got, sometimes you gotta play the hardball, and if they don't do it, hey, you got their bond, you find somebody else to do it. I mean, but, but when it comes to striping, I will tell you, that's just.
There's nobody else out there to do it.
That, that's exactly right. And you're at the mercy of them, uh, unfortunately, uh, just.
So any entrepreneur that's listening, this is a great business opportunity.
Goodbye, striping.
It's expensive.
Hey, I, I wish you could. I mean, it's, it's a, you know, it's what it costs to get into it, and then, you know, like everybody.
It's not low-cost entry, for sure.
It, it, it's a help. I mean, it's, it's, it's with anything. So, I try to include that with, with, um. that with, with, um, with, with our, um, with, with our L-MIG and our T-Splash.
So, you mentioned all the extra money that's coming out of L-MIG, is that above and beyond the incremental L-MIG that the county's got?
Yes. You know, every county, just like y'all, okay, y'all are, y'all are similar to Madison County, mileage-wise and everything else, you know, you get your eight-hundred, you know, normal L-MIG, I think, was what, you got eight-hundred thousand last year, the LAR money, the extra LAR money you got, but it didn't have a match, you got the one point, what your thirty percent match was. So, you know, so between those two, because, because of that extra money that they give us in LAR the last two years, uh, you know, that's allowed us to do extra things with it. I mean, we, you know, we've planned for it, just like I'm planning for it for next year, I've already told the chairman and the board down there that, "Look, we're planning to do this, this, we're gonna turn this list in." Now, if we don't get the LAR money, the extra, you know, our extra mon- every million dollars basically what it was, if we don't get it, then yes, we're gonna have to back off on that list. We will write that in our contract, that, and, and that's what we do, we write it in the contract that, you know, we have the right to, due to budget and all that, we have the right to take those roads off if needed, you know, and, you know, any good contractor's gonna work with you, uh, the ones we have, the ones y'all have, I know they will, so, uh, you know, you can, you can hope for the best and put that out there, you know, and like I said, with the proper language, you, you, if you gotta back off on it because of overruns and patching or whatever it may be, and that happens, I mean, we've had it happen in Madison, I mean, you run into certain things and it's like, you know, we, we were gonna patch a road, you know, put the job out, and time it goes, and you get there, hey, things, something happened, things went, I said, the, the truck or whatever, and, you know, we reclaimed the road. I mean, instead of patching it, it was gonna be cheaper to actually go in and reclaim it and-
Round it up and start over.
And overlay it, yeah.
We've had to do that.
Very expensive, but sometimes it's the best option.
You know, there's, you know, and there's ways, I mean, when you, you know, I did it years ago, Walton County, Walton County actually was one of the first, I just had started with DOT in ninety-five-four, uh, Walton County started reclaiming their roads 'cause they were so bad, and we started just taking the old road, turning it under, the county put it back on typical, they primed it, we come in, we put two inches of binder and an inch and a half of topping on it, saved a bunch of money, and those roads are, you know, they're, you know, there's, there's way, there's techniques and there's things to do that will save you some money. Uh, we, we re- reclaimed two roads this year, uh, with Garrett, you know, hey, he charged us five dollars a square yard to turn the road under, where if you do a normal reclaiming and adding cement, the cement's got outrageous and all that, I mean, you're looking at, most of those are seventy-five to a hundred dollars a square yard. So, you can take the old bay, the old road, just turn it under, maybe add a little bit of GAB, that's what we done, we, hey, we turned the road under, it's out there by the feed mill, uh, off, off O-seventy-two, the road come all to pieces, it was a, it was a little short road that they went in and did a, uh, a reclaim to it years ago, and did a sole cement, and guess what, once water gets in that sole cement, it goes bad, but we went in and reclaimed that road, we put four inches of, of, uh, uh, bait GAB on it, put two inches of binder, each and a half of topping back on it, it's carrying sixty-five to eighty-five feed mill trucks every day. And when, and then when they're harvesting, it goes to a hundred a day. So, you know, like I said, but to the road rating part, you know, it's, I, I, I can promise you, with the way it's gonna be done, with the way, way we're doing this, you're gonna get what you ask for with a DOT-type rating, with the experience behind it to give you, from that, once we get the rating, and then we start looking at it and determining what you wanna do, then you're gonna get, you're gonna get the best information that you can get, determine what's best for those roads, once we get that.
Yeah, it really is a difference maker, and it really is the, the best first step, ultimately, it's something that you guys have to decide.
Right.
I feel like we've used a lot of your time, so, um, if you don't have any pressing questions now, maybe you can, uh, just have Terrell, uh, or Marshall, one of you can reach out to us, and we're happy to, to work, work out a new scope, or, we're, we're flexible. My company's small, we, we can be flexible, it's, it's one of the values of, of being a small company. So, thank you so much for your time this evening.
Well, thank you, I found it very interesting, I said.
Thank y'all. Thank you, Terrell, thank y'all.
Yes, sir, thank you. All right, reports by Constitutional Officers Department, Ms. Kim. All right, County Administrators' report.
Basically, what I've got is the, the financial report for September, uh, we give that just a minute to pop up. There you go, for the, again, I won't, it's the end of the fiscal year, but I won't worry about it, these are unaltered numbers, they will change, believe me. Anyway, uh, for actual revenue of September, brought in a million thirty-seven thousand six hundred and ninety dollars. Our expenses were a million two hundred and eighty-eight thousand five hundred and ninety-nine dollars. That, that's a deficit of two hundred and fifty thousand nine hundred and nine. Uh, surplus for the year is two million three hundred and eighty thousand four hundred and ninety dollars. Property taxes, of course, this time of year's not gonna bring in anything much, brought in ten thousand eight hundred and one dollars. Laws come in, three hundred and seventy dollars, uh, three hundred and seventy thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars. EMS collection, one fifty-seven, six twenty-six. Vehicle tag receipts were one seventy-three, six oh-one. And, uh, for the year, we've run about thirteen percent over, uh, on revenue and about one percent under on expenses. Again, these are unaltered numbers, these will change. Be glad to answer any questions, you got it?
Thank you.
Oh, no, that's all I have.
Appreciate it, Terrell.
Thank you, Terrell. Uh, now we'll move on down to Chairman's report. Uh, we were invited to the Northeast Georgia Animal Shelter, and so I moseyed on up there to the animal shelter, and they have completed their new addition. And the great thing about that, it was paid for, from my understanding, all with donations and volunteer fundraising, uh, efforts of the people, and I'm sure we as taxpayers do appreciate that, that it's not coming out of, uh, your property taxes. However, we do fund the animal shelter, but that new addition, if you hadn't been up there and looked at it, is, is very nice, so, uh, I would encourage you to go up there and, uh, see it. Uh, we'll move on to District One, Commissioner Bennett.
I really don't have anything, Mr. Chairman, other than hats off to the Northeast Georgia Animal Shelter, and for getting out and collecting all the money they do outside of their monies that they get from the counties, and I'd also like to thank everybody that keeps the wheels turning here in Hart County, and our citizens as well, unless we got some new faces here tonight, and so, anyway, uh, anybody and everybody's welcome to come to our meetings and listen, I really enjoy seeing new people here. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we'll move to District Two, Commissioner Teasley.
I appreciate our public safety and all of our county employees, and, um, you know, appreciate your job, but everybody does, it works for the county, that's all I got.
All right, District Four, Commissioner Brown.
I don't have anything this time, Mr. Chairman.
All right, uh, District Five, Commissioner Dorsey.
Um, I had mentioned earlier, but I'm proud they were here, so we all know now there is truly a problem with the striping. No, we didn't think it was just you, but we get complaints weekly.
I've been calling you, Terrell, I keep asking Marshall.
As a matter of fact, and I don't know, um, I was contacted today about Golf Course Road, and I, I didn't get a chance to talk to the commissioner. No, but that road was resurfaced and paid for by Georgia Power, part us, um, is, and I don't remember if that was on the striping list or not, I don't believe it was.
It may not be yours.
Wasn't the striping included in the repayment?
Uh, don't, see-
I thought it was.
It may have been, but the problem is, Georgia Power paid for part of that.
I remember, well.
When they did that substation, they tore that road up.
They paid for it, yeah.
All we need for is that station, because of that, uh, restaurant there, back to twenty-nine.
Yeah.
So, we need, my point, though, is we just need to look and see if it's not, it needs to be added to that list, if everybody's okay with that.
Yes, huh.
And the other thing I was gonna ask Terrell, and I don't wanna put you on the spot, but ISO, we heard anything back on when they're coming or what they're gonna do?
They still have the information we sent them, is, is all we have, we haven't heard back from.
Okay. Just so everybody knows, we're trying to get ISO back in here to try to get your ISO rating on your homeowner's insurance lowered back down to a four, um, that's what we're pushing to do, so. Okay, thank you, Terrell.
Sit down.
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you all. Uh, now we'll move on to, uh, twelve A, uh, Old Business Public Works Director Job Description.
Uh, y'all had discussions over this at the last meeting, uh, so that's kinda where we left it. This is the one from GMRC. Right now, we have the one that's actually still in place, I meant to put it in the packet, but I didn't.
Did you, that's what I was wondering, if you had compared it to the one, 'cause this is obviously an existing possession, we've nailed it a lot of times.
It's got a little more detail to it, I think, than the other bit. A good bit of detail, which I'm not sure is necessarily needed, but-
Yeah.
That last line in every job description covers most everything else.
Depends on what you say.
Other, other duties as assigned.
If we could, if we could mark that out and put Terrell in there, whatever Terrell says.
No.
Couple of things, just that stood out to me, um, under essential functions, supervises the activities, that paragraph or that bullet point, I think we need to add succession planning there, because we know we got one opening, it's gonna be there at the end of the year, and there's a possibility of at least one more. I don't know when Ed's gonna retire, but somebody to, to start developing somebody to fill in-
Well, we've been, we've been working with it two years.
I know. But just, that needs to be part of his job description. Other things I saw, um, this person needs to know that they're available and to be on call twenty-four-seven, and that's not in here. We have weather situations, trees down, they'll need to be out.
Well, that's, that's a requirement, every department, but-
But it's not, it's not listed. I would like to see, um, this tied to the employee handbook, um, I talked to one of the other commissioners today briefly, um, and I mentioned this at the last meeting, there's some things here that kinda conflict a little bit with the handbook, and I have not had a chance to completely go through that.
Which, which ones?
Talking about hours and, um, work schedules, that kinda things. We've talked about, um, kinda, we've deviated so far away from what I see from things in the handbook that we don't do now, and I think we need to, need to either update it or we need to get back to it, because everybody needs to have a clear understanding.
Yeah.
And I don't mean that as a negative toward anybody here, I mean, it's just, it's just kinda-
Are you, you're talking, you're speaking about the, the workday week stuff?
Well, that, I'm talking about, uh, clocking out when you go to lunch, uh, handbook plainly states that, somebody's on the clock and out here in their personal vehicle and they're involved in an accident, we're gonna be in a pickle there.
Okay.
Um, if somebody doesn't clock out, because technically, they're on the clock, so technically, they're working, it could be argued. Work hours needs to be tied into this, um, I mean, the board ultimately, through the county administrator approves those kinda changes. I'd like to see, we talked about this too, this road study, as far as maintaining this, doing this, updating data and providing that as well, but, uh, if everybody's okay, we're gonna have to have a call meeting next week.
Correct, and that's, we'll just, that and we'll discuss it.
Get this done, 'cause I think we all agree, this is a priority.
I agree.
And I know you do.
I've been, I've been agreeing for a long time.
Kim, did you find anything?
Excuse me.
I just had a little heartburn over trying it to the water and sewer and then-
Yeah, we talked about that today. Conflict.
That needs to be totally separate, you know, they were beginning a government agreement, or, or maybe just providing that assistance on when they specifically are interacting with the county, but, I don't think we can loan an employee today.
No, I need to get it, that, that needs to come out. I'm sure they'll all work together, but you can't bind them by contract, do you?
Another thing that I just laughed about, communicates residents to resolve customer service concerns.
I didn't hear you.
You have to dispel everything, you're the public works director.
Yeah, I do, that's a field. That's a field.
If things last, they will perform what they need in the zone.
And I, I think, too, we should put risk management under this person, because this is where most of the action takes place.
Yeah, that'd be good, too.
Um, I figured you'd like that.
You'd give a second on that.
And the, uh, the other thing, I mentioned this before, um, the erosion and sedimentation control, um, I just don't think we need to get into that, I think we need to let the state handle that.
To get into that, like, like we just, I think, yesterday, one, that would take an actual ordinance for you to buy this board.
But there's a lot of liability that comes with that, too, and that's why I think we need to stay away from that.
I've dodged it for the last eight years, anyway.
And the flood insurance program, you've handled that under EMA.
Yeah, I have it with EMA.
I mean, those were the biggest things that I saw.
It sounds like it needs to be rewritten, I mean-
Yeah, just a few updates.
Well, I mean-
Well, again-
I wished I, I wished I'd remembered to put that old one in there, it would, it would, it, it functioned for twenty years, but-
I mean, I think this is pretty good from what, what we got, I think it's good to go from, just little tweaks and-
Yeah, we'll say, I, I-
I mean, time they scroll down and then they realize, "Well, heck, I can't even apply for it, 'cause there's too much in here," or, "What's the point?"
I agree, I agree. Uh, again, if y'all make me some notes, I'll have it ready to come back, whatever you want, I'll have it ready to come back when, when we do the, the next meeting.
All right. Okay.
Kim can do it.
All right. So, we will not take any action on this until we get our notes, uh, involved into the document. We're going to bid award recreation basketball uniforms.
And you'll see there, I've got the bid tabs and, uh, the minutes from the Rec Board with their recommendation, which is to award to-
Go Sports?
Go Sport.
I make a motion to go with the recommendation of the Rec Board to Go Sports.
Second. Got a motion by Commissioner Bennett, second back to Mr. Brown, any discussion? If not, we call for a vote, all in favor, this is five of them. All right, we'll move on to, uh, approval of, uh, draft miller rate.
We finally got the official final digest, Thursday, I think, last week, uh, we were close, I had to change it one thousandth of a, of a mill.
Actually, zero-point-zero-nine-eight, I did the math, it's actually zero-point-zero-nine-eight is what I come up with.
Well, that's, yeah, that's, we'll have to go back.
Yeah.
But I, I would already guessed it, it's, uh, nine-seven-three. Have to come back up tomorrow. But anyway, that, that will be the rollback rate, it, uh, three-point-nine-seven-four mills on, on that, it's, uh, we'll draft, uh, y'all draft, approve the draft of this, that way I can legally advertise it next week, uh, and we'll come back after the public hearing at the call meeting and officially adopt it.
I make a motion, we, uh, adopt the twenty-twenty-five draft miller rate of three-point-nine-seven-four and authorize county administrator to move forward advertising the five-year history in public meeting for final approval.
Uh, in Hughes, we'll need to set the exact day and time- And Hughes, we'll need to set the exact day and time of that meeting, cause this gotta go on this advertisement. We can do it anytime from Thursday. We got, we got advertising, it'll come out Thursday, the next Thursday, we can do it, cause it comes out that morning. Thursday or Friday one, which day suits y'all and what time?
Talking about this week?
Next week.
Coming with, coming.
It's gonna be every.
Twenty-third, twenty-fourth, one.
I thought you was asking when to meet.
I am.
Yeah.
It's gotta run in the paper a week before we can meet.
So that's why it's gotta be in next week's paper.
Meet next week.
No, it'd be in this week's.
This week's paper, we'll meet next week. We'll meet next week.
It's a week from Thursday.
Come out, we need tonight, Thursday morning officially, this week, day after tomorrow. And it runs for a week and then we, after the, next Thursday, we, anytime, we can meet anytime after next Thursday. So, we can do it Thursday, lunchtime, afternoon, whatever, I just gotta put the date and time on this advertisement.
Thursday five, alright?
I'd rather do it at lunch.
No, I can't do Thursday.
What about lunch? About twelve o'clock?
Can't be Thursday at all.
Not Thursday five. Twelve's good.
Thursday at one.
Yeah, well, you can do them around lunchtime on each call.
Twelve, twelve thirty.
You're talking about this Thursday?
No, next Thursday.
Next Thursday.
Yeah, what about you, I'm home too.
When, when you talking about this Thursday?
No, next Thursday, next week from this Thursday.
Twenty-third.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, mine will be, yeah.
Yes, lunch.
Alright, well, good, I guessed right, that's what I got on my head.
Do what, Terrell?
That's what I guessed right, that's what I already had on my head.
What?
Next Thursday at twelve o'clock.
Okay. Everybody get?
Yep.
Okay.
Just, just to kinda explain how this stuff works, people may or may not know, this, we have to roll back for lost taxes, sales taxes, we have to make a rollback in the military rate. And I don't make these numbers up, I go to the state site and pull them down and you take the amount of, of, of lost money we're gonna give, which is four point two, one million. You put in your total digest number, which is just one trillion, nine hundred and twenty-five million, eight hundred and two thousand, four hundred and fifty-three dollars. And, and our military rate here, and it breaks down and gives us, it rolls back the total military rate by two mils, two point one eight six mils, how much? The sales tax takes off your property tax, if that makes sense to y'all just to understand.
So basically what you're saying is, the, the LOST tax basically cuts your property tax about thirty-three percent?
Correct.
Cause if you didn't have that, I mean, the rate would be six.
And this resolution will pass at the next meeting, and it is, it just resolves that we will, we are rolling back because of local office sales tax, the two point one eight six mils. So this is document to be signed at the next call meeting too. If we got the school's information in time, we'll sign the final document, it's, it's a collection. You'll have their military rate, our military rate and the total military rate of here. I haven't talked to the school this week, so if they get there, they gotta do the same thing we're doing right now. If they get there done in time, we'll try to get all this final stuff done, we'll be through this stuff for another year. Anybody got any questions? This stuff gets kinda confusing to me sometimes, especially to the public, but I think we have to try to answer any questions they may have.
Alright, we got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second back to Commissioner Teasley, any other discussion, questions?
I'll add it to the motion, twenty-third at twelve o'clock.
Okay.
Yeah, I said that in the motion, five-year history.
I just don't show them, but we have a collection, we have some property tax money this year that we did like. Keep all the, all the military rate back on doing good, but it does. Oh, well, I'll use your level of preparedness here. This is last year's, uh, amount of taxes, we, if we collect the hundred percent, that's how much we would collect. Third, seven thousand dollar increase from the year before. This year, this is the amount, at a hundred percent if we possibly collect, and it's forty-two thousand dollars less than it was last year. So, we'll be as prudent as we can with your tax money. That's all I have, I'll let somebody ask a question.
Excuse me.
Okay. Got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second back to Commissioner Teasley, any other discussion, or comments? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor? This is five oh vote. Alright, we'll move on to, uh, approval of, uh, draft insurance premium fund and loss rollback military.
I just wanna roll this stuff.
Yeah, I make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second back to Commissioner Teasley, any discussion, questions, comments? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor? This is five oh vote. So we'll move on to, uh, new business, uh, requests to bid cover for batting cages for the Rec Department.
Basically what this is, the old cover's kinda gone, the one they'll cover on the, what they want to cover was the carport type structure. To bid out to cover the batting cages with, and they request you send it out for bids.
Terrell, quick question, um, didn't we approve this for last year's budget for the Rec Department? The cover of the batting cages?
We may have.
We talked about it.
Why do we have to put it out for bid, why can't the Rec?
They are, no, we'll have, we'll have to put this out to bid, this is not.
But if we've already approved it?
Uh-huh.
I mean, if we've already approved the monies, why can't they put, why can't they put it out for bid?
We have to do all the purchasing.
We have to do the purchasing.
We'd have to finalize the bid, right?
Huh?
We'd have to finalize the bid, right?
Correct.
We'd have to prove it, so why do we have to put it out?
Send it out too.
But why, it's just, I mean, is that state law, do we have to?
That's county policy.
And I'm with you. It just seems redundant to me that we're always doing the Rec Advisory Board's job, I mean, especially when we're our approved funds to be.
They're, they're in the advisory board, they're not, they don't have any power.
I remember specifically approving a batting cage cover last year, not the year before.
It may have been in the budget, but it didn't go out for bid.
You know, I've got a lot of questions on why this hasn't went out for bid and why it hasn't been put up when the money's been allocated, and so my question is, why are we beating it around instead of, if the money's been allocated for?
I just got the request from the Rec Department to put out the bid.
Okay.
Well, I know it's not on agenda for us to discuss this, but I'd like to see us discuss giving the Rec Department a lot more authority than what they have, and they can do a lot of this uniform stuff.
We got half of our meetings, we do nothing but bid openings for basketball jerseys and pom poms and everything.
Well, I'm just saying, I agree with you, but that's not on agenda, we can't discuss it. I'll go ahead and make a motion.
And stuff like that's different, in my opinion.
I'll go ahead and make a motion, let the Rec Department go ahead and solicit bids for the carport type.
You gotta change your whole policy, Commissioner Bennett, you can't just.
I just wanna say this, not on, we didn't put it on the agenda.
Mine need to be put on that.
That's gonna be a lot more complicated, it's not as easy as just.
We can do it complicated.
I'm fully aware of it, but I think we'd be, we're ahead if we were to take time out sometime to do that, I mean, everything from uniforms to this type of stuff, you know, give them, let them do the job.
Now, you, uniforms, I, I agree with you, this kinda stuff, it's the county property, that's the difference. The uniform stuff is gonna be paid for by the.
We still have to approve it though.
Huh?
I mean, we still have to approve it.
Right.
So we're, we're, we're going back on monies that we've already appropriated for a structure.
If you don't go away with a.
A year or two later.
That's fine, that's fine, but, but the bid's gotta come back in here, they can't come.
I, I, we counted up, well, I can't remember how many licensed contractors or coaches at Little League, I mean, you probably can get it done for next to nothing, and they're just chomping at the bit wanting to put this up. And, you know, it's just silly things like this, I get aggravated and know it, but I, I know it's small and petty, but I just.
I, I, I agree with you on the uniform kinda stuff and all that stuff, but again, when you, when you're dealing with buying county property, which is gonna be county property, that may be a little different.
I mean, it'd be different if it just appeared one day and we didn't approve it, yeah.
Well, I don't, I don't disagree with it, that's, that's a policy change, it may not make, you, will cut down some of the new work, but it's still, still, they can hear.
Well, you may have to look in that a little deeper, simply because when you get into the property, just what, exactly what property would they be able to?
Well, keep in mind, the reason, the reason the purchasing policy was developed the way that it was, it started over a tree cutting bid, probably in two thousand one, two thousand two. And we decided that we would open all bids at a regular scheduled meeting, which is on TV and everybody could see, it's totally transparent and there's, there's not bids being opened in, at this meeting and that meeting or whatever, all bids are opened by this board on TV and it's televised and everybody can see where their tax money is going.
But that's why, I think you cut down on half of it, just by if it budgeted, they got the right to go ahead and.
In our packet, every single bid to the dollar cent, I mean, it's the same thing.
I mean, that, that, that would be very reasonable, if you, it's already, we've already budgeted, they got the right to get the bid together and send it out.
We'd still be the ones to open the bids.
Still needs to come back in here to go, just for.
And we'd have to approve the bids back.
That way, it's, like I say, it's in front of TV, everybody sees it, everybody notices. Now, the uniform stuff, I don't.
Yeah, that gets on the.
And if an individual pays fifty dollars for their child to sign up for basketball, they're paying for the uniform.
Correct.
You're not using taxpayer property taxes to pay for uniforms.
Involved in it anyway.
So to me, it's silly.
Let the, let the coaches get their own uniforms and be done with it.
Yeah. Yeah, picture, and this, and the picture taken too, the photo thing, you know, we, we need to get rid of that.
We got a motion by Commissioner Bennett, did anyone ever second?
No.
Oh, yeah.
There's, there's. You seconded it, okay.
There's a point of clarity that needs to be made here, under gutters and downspouts, each side of the structure, front and back, downspouts to be at the same end of the structure. We need to make sure that water doesn't come in there on the back, inside the batting cages. That water needs to be carried away.
Alright, uh, we're at discussion point now, and Mr. Owens, if you'd like to come and speak.
Well, I read that and assumed you was taking the water away from the facility, right? Okay.
Just wanna make sure it's not clear, it says front and back.
Well, that's the purpose of the guy. It's three way up pitch, you're gonna take it to the back. To the back.
From the back by the, by the outfield fence and come to the front and go down the drainage ditch.
My point is, take it away so that it doesn't flood that concrete, so we don't get complaints about that. We're putting gutters and downspouts, we need to take it down, get it out of the way, so it doesn't flood.
That's exactly where the two downspouts on the corners of the building would go.
It doesn't say that in the bid spec, that's my point.
I'll adjust that before we send it out.
Sure, that's all, only issue I got.
Alright, any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor? This is five oh vote. Alright, we'll move on to, uh, city of Hartle annexation.
I put in the packet the information I received from the city of Hartle, on, uh, whatever date that was, uh.
September twenty-four.
Twenty-four, uh, the annex. Approximately twenty-nine, below twenty-nine acres, uh, on tax portal, I fifty-seven F zero ten. It does contiguous with the city, uh, so that portion of the requirement is made.
My question is, I know that they're gonna, they already got part of it in the city street and all that, or they gonna, we're gonna have to give up that road where they can maintain that as well in front of, in front of that property?
Well, it works with both sides in the city.
Well, it is both sides, it's gonna make both sides.
Yeah, the road becomes, um, there may.
A portion of it will be.
Well, I, I'm thinking it need to be a sign that says in-city maintenance or beginning county maintenance or something.
We'll have a city limit sign there.
Well, the people that's out there, that's what I'm saying, keep them from calling our district, I think that's Marshall's district, matter of fact, but anyways, uh.
But again, they should, they should, I would, I would assume they're gonna place a city limit sign.
Yeah, they should, yeah, but I'm just saying, we need to make that clear.
Really hadn't been an issue, I mean, cause you got the same thing on Laurel and some other raises in there, uh, Scott Mill, but it really hadn't been a.
What's an issue is like right down here, out on twenty-nine south.
Highway on State Highway.
You got an accident, is it city fires, it county fires, it Hartle PD, is it sheriff's office? And that's the problem.
Yeah, they just skip in there.
Yes.
And that's, and that's based on the address itself, oh.
That's the, that's the only thing I had on there.
This prop here's continuous.
It is.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
So, one of the questions that I've got is if, once this is annexed, the law says that the zoning cannot be changed for a year. Even though we don't have zoning, um, this, part of this is basically a green space, it's a wooded area. And I don't wanna put Kim on the spot, but I, I, we've got time to act on this later. We've got forty-five days from the twenty-fourth of September. And I think it would be wise that we ask the city if they would consider in the zoning annexation ordinance to require this to be left as is for a year.
The law states that, um, it stays as it is, you know, presently zoned for one year after the effective date of annexation. Unless it's placed in the notice that they intend to change it to a more intense density, a thirty-six, thirty-six, one twelve, and they're saying in here, um.
I think I read they're gonna leave it as is, didn't they?
It's a single-family residential. Well, it's currently not zoned, but it is just trees. Problem enters there where it says no development plans were attached or submitted.
Yep.
So, I do think they intend on taking it from what it is, the single-family residential, we just don't know.
And it's funny that the letter from Jason Ford says the case will be heard by Hartle's Planning and Zoning Commission on its regular scheduled hearing date of October twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, and our time to object is not gonna be expired at that point in time either.
Right, you got forty-five days from the day you receive, and Carol said he got that on nine twenty-four. Sometime early November.
Eleven, nine or something.
Action deadline, so you've got plenty of time to continue with that. I just wanted to let you know, we've, we've stated before, you can't change it within a year. I tried to look at that a little bit harder today and it says more intense density than that stated in the notice. We still run into that same problem that we don't have zone, and so there's not a lot of guidance on, you know, what the current use is versus the different use with the city, cause we don't have it zoned as anything. Is it tax, is that the question, do you know if it's in?
It is.
It is. I can't, I don't think it is.
Huh?
I don't think it is.
I thought I read it was.
I read their tax payments and it didn't say nothing about it.
Well, it's not the Cuba. They got it as an agriculture, A-five agricultural class.
Yeah, that's what I'm. It's in agriculture.
A-five agricultural.
So what's the wish of the board?
Eight, uh, five, seven, F, oh, nine, already in the city?
Yeah.
And part of this one is.
So a portion of ten is already in the city.
Just a small part. I'd like to see what the plans are.
Is that required?
No. It's been submitted by others who have submitted annexation stuff in the past, though.
The requirement for us is just that we get the notice that includes the copy of the annexation petition. It's not included, propose zoning and land use for said area.
They've done that, alright.
Yeah, their, their application was based on city amenities, if you read that, I'm sure you did. Can they step outside of? Uh, can they step outside of those guidelines? I thought those guidelines had to stay in place for a certain time.
What's that? Which guideline?
They asking for city sewer, city gas, city water, and all that. That's what the application was based off of, from what I read.
So, I think in theory, you have the right to object when it changes the density, but if the notice tells us that they intend to change it to a single-family, and you don't object, y'all don't object, then they don't have that one-year waiting period. If you do object, there's a one-year waiting period.
But my point is that they're, they're looking at single families, right now they're looking at single families.
But, but the, the difference, though, the, the single family could be argued, the density and the size of the lots.
Yeah.
That's where there could be an issue, that we could, that we could object to.
They could go down to quarter acre lots.
Yeah, cause everything around this is half acre or greater. If you look into them Q public, the smallest one I've seen that's around it's a half acre.
Can you have us those answers by next meeting? Can you?
I thought, what answer are you going to give? I thought I was answering.
Well, I mean, I'm confused at the point where I thought it had to be zoned before these conditions were applied.
It's a change in density, and, and.
If it's zoned.
You can look at zoning for that, we don't have zoning, that's when I asked about what it was taxed on, so it is under an agricultural classification, and if they do intend to change it to single-family.
What about, um, service and delivery, does this affect service and delivery map?
So, they recognize that it's zoning? It would be enlisted as agriculture?
I can't tell you that would be recognized as zoning, but the standard is a change in density, an increase in density.
Well, that's my question.
So, it could be a proposed change in zoning or land use, and so the land use is agricultural. A, or a proposed increase in density or infrastructure demands, so we're not gonna have the infrastructure demands, but the proposed increase in density, I guess we did have infrastructure demands, no, they got their own, uh, endos.
When was this received again? September?
September twenty-four.
We got, how many, forty-five?
Forty-five.
The proposed increase in density.
Let's just look at.
Keep going back.
So, we received it on twenty-fourth. Do we have, or do we even have another meeting within the forty-five days?
Yeah, we got one on twenty-eighth, two weeks from today.
Yeah, regular meeting in October.
So, we might use more clarification.
November the sixth.
So, you put it in the email.
Okay.
Well, there's no site plan, nothing come, just like we have got in the past, so there's really, I don't know what your question, I don't know what your question is gonna be to them.
I think the site plan came in, they're doing multifamily.
But there's nothing with this one.
I don't, well.
Well, you had the impact analysis done, but there's no actual, you know, specific or, you know, plotted out specifications.
No such thing if we've got the other plans on, there's been a multifamily in it somewhere.
All right, the problem is, this thing could be rezoned later on, that's where people in the county get upset about stuff, especially things around the perimeter. It could be annexed and zoned R-one, and then two years later, if it sells or something else, another owner could come in and ask it to be rezoned for a multifamily type zoning. Whether or not they approve it or not, I don't know, that's out of our control.
Yes, that's true, but I'm not sure what we could do to.
Cause this, this, this annexation stuff is very controversial, people are tired of the growth, and that's been the common denominator for quite some time.
Well, that's what I just said, I don't know what you can ask them. I'd love to, I, I know a question I'd like to ask them.
Well, I think there's, there's a question about the change in use, possibly density as well, and what gives us time to, to do our due diligence. We got, we're well within our time, if we don't respond within our time, then it moves forward.
Yeah, if we don't make a decision within the forty-five days, it's a done deal anyway, so.
Given that we got that much time, given that we have that much time, let's make sure that we're all on the same page.
So, we'll take no action on it tonight, and we'll be prepared, uh, for our next meeting. Okay.
All right, let's go with the next one, this is the annexation in the town of Bowersville, parcel C sixteen O thirty-four, so thirty-six plus or minus acres, and it is, it's contiguous to, contiguous with, with the town of Bowersville on three sides.
And this is the same property that was de-annexed previously, earlier.
I think they get an award.
Well, the ownership's changed. Yeah, the ownership has changed, and he'd rather have it annexed into the city of Bowersville, and so therefore, I don't think you're gonna be creating any islands or.
No, there won't, there won't be any islands.
Because.
There is a difference, though, I, I went back and looked, that it used to be one, um, one continuous track, and it's been sectioned up.
Subdivided into three tracks.
Yeah, three tracks.
Which, we didn't know that is because they're exempt, cause they're over ten acres, that's why we didn't see it. So, you, we got this one on October second?
Yes.
Whatever date I put on it.
Kind of the same thing here, we didn't really get a whole lot of information, um, on what's being proposed, but.
What's, what's submitted is contradictory to what's being done.
You're saying agriculture, and I know from what I have gathered, it's, it's not agriculture what's being proposed, it's high-density housing.
He's gonna build a, build a single-family residential house on it, was my understanding, but we got three tracks here.
But I, from what I've heard, that it was actually gonna be multi, it was gonna be subdivided into many tracks. But either way, we've got time on this one, too.
Oh, yeah, this is, like I say, I won't.
We've got more time on this than we did on.
And your notification date on this one, Carol, was?
October seventh.
Ten-six.
Huh?
Ten-six.
Ten-six, okay. All right, we'll plan on looking at that one at the next meeting also. All right, next is the, uh, road department, uh, purchase of a used bucket truck.
Yeah, like I said, we've been needing a bucket truck for a long time, and we've just kind of been waiting on something. I knew the phone company was gonna have something coming up, uh, probably in the late, uh, two of them's become, become available, uh, price on them eighteen thousand, uh, we know the trucks, so, uh, my written basis, we get them, they need them for trimming, me and the stuff over the road, we get complaints on them.
What, I know they need trucks, what models are they?
Uh, you remember Marshall?
No, yeah, I don't know what, I mean, they're not very old.
No, they, they, they all relatively new.
Those type of trucks, the truck without the boom on it's worth the kind of money they ask for.
And they give them, they, they always do us that a very.
I made a motion we purchased the truck for eighteen thousand dollars.
I'll give you a second.
All right, we got a motion to second.
I know they need that.
All right.
Any discussion?
Do you know what the reach is? The reach, how high, how high of a bucket?
Most of them forty, I think.
I'd say forty-five, forty, forty-five foot.
Forty, I think, most of them.
Like a telephone pole, something in forty-five foot tall, on the, I'm gonna buy that by, they get to the top of it.
All right, any other questions? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, that's five oh vote. All right, now we'll move on to, uh, Lunsford Platte approval.
Again, this, I briefly discussed this with y'all a couple meetings ago, uh, I think if you had turned the scenario backwards, we probably wouldn't be having this conversation. But, uh, the, the history on this, he come in, he bought his whole flat, the whole property here, and we issued him a, a permit to build chicken houses on it. Uh, well, then he, then he come back, they started the, the construction on the chicken house, he came back in with this three-acre lot here in the corner, uh, chicken houses are back, back behind these houses, this, this three-acre lot. Well, I approved it under the, uh, exemption of the one split, every twenty-four months exemption, uh, thirty-four, four, dash, three. Then he, we so late to come back in, we, we wanting to split it two more times, uh, three more times, two more times, which, I don't know which, which part of the ordinance to go by. We have an exemption for anything over ten acres or more, which is exempt, uh, which all these tracks are over ten acres. I made to go back and redraw with the chicken houses on it to give me the setbacks on the chicken houses on this, on this track number three. So, uh, again, if, if, if the ten acres or above exemption still applies.
I hope so, yeah.
I mean, that's a decision, that's the way I, I interpreted it on a different plate, not this one, a different plate.
Yeah, we need, we need updated plate. So, track one is the one you approved initially?
Oh, yeah, that's that little three-acre spot there in the.
Well, no, that's not, that's ten acres.
The first one's this one, that's the one with the three acres.
This font, it's awful small.
That's three acres, exactly.
It kind of just referencing back a few pages, I mean, there's a plat on the Bowersville that we just looked at, the Bowersville annexation, those tracks are over ten acres, we never seen that plat, cause it was exempt.
Correct.
Yeah.
But it hadn't been approved, it hadn't been recorded yet, has it?
Which one?
It has.
This has, no, Bowersville.
It has? I didn't see the staff on it.
Yeah, I went back and made the changes y'all requested on.
I just personally don't, I mean, it, it's exempt, I don't, I don't see any other definition other than, I mean, it's over ten acres.
That's what I saw.
The intent of what we were, what we did earlier, um, this summer, was to eliminate, like a Liberty Hill situation, if you have ten acres, I come in, I get one plat, I wait a, a day or two, come back, get another plat, acre at a time, um, you know, given that we have taken the firm stance that ten acres or more is exempt, and.
But now he can't come back for two years, right?
Why?
And spend the year.
Basically, they're exempt.
Well, he can, he can come back and split it, then, then the two-year rule would apply.
What, what does the exact language in the ordinance that we changed for the twenty-four months say?
Well, it don't matter really what that says, because exemptions, the following are not included within these definitions or otherwise exempt from this chapter.
But it talks about the master parcel, I think, that's all I'm saying, I just want to make sure before we go and do something that we don't contradict.
This is exempt, though.
But what I'm saying is.
When I put the exemption down there, I, I've got a place where I listed master, the original parcel, and I got a spreadsheet, uh, I keep those in, that's where, that's where he, he got me when it come back after I done this three-acre one, I listed that in that parent parcel, the rest of it.
The lucky seed, if he'd have came down here and got these parcels split into greater than ten-acre tracks, all, every one of them, you would have signed off on it.
You got one less than ten acres, so that's where the issue comes in, where he proved the three acres down in the corner.
No, I'm saying, if.
If he would have come after.
We're not doing the three acres, if he'd come down here and got these other parcels.
Yeah, if all, all of them ten acres or greater, I agree, no issue, no issue.
So, why can't he do it now?
Because he's done one at three already, now he's coming back, this, that's why I want to know about the exact language in the, what they listed in, in the ordinance, because we referenced the master parcel.
Well, okay, now, what I'm asking is, if he'd have come back and done those in greater than ten acres.
Where I'm going.
Why couldn't he come back?
We may have a conflict in the language.
Why couldn't he come back and do the three acres?
He could.
I'm not arguing, I just want to know what the language is, so that we don't contradict ourselves.
If he would have came in and did the, the over ten-acre tracks first, it would have been exempt, and then if he would have came back and did track, uh, three there with a three acre, he could have done that.
Right, Carol could have signed off on that.
We, we're gonna set a precedent.
Cause the intent, because the intent is to protect agriculture land, which we've took the stance over ten acres, you got a poultry house operation there, um, you know, looking at the topograph amount, I mean, you really can't put in a subdivision there, if you, if you did, I mean, everybody would be chicken, you know, be smelling like chickens, which I ain't knocking that, it smells good, but not everybody will smell like that.
Pardon the pun, this comes down to which will come first, chicken or the egg.
And he, what he really should have done is done it backwards.
Yes, absolutely, that's one.
And maybe this is a, a good, uh, example for everyone to see going forward, that hey, if, if you do need to shave off a track for your family member or whoever.
So, so exemption number two says the division of land in the parcels of ten acres or more, where no new street or change in an existing street is involved. Exemption number three, one division of land in the two total parcels, each parcel being a minimum of one acre or sufficient size and standards to meet the requirements of the health department, whichever is greater. The land, the notation marked correct exterior, shall be delineated by its parent slash original tax map and parcel number. A division of a parent slash original tax map and parcel number to include any newly created parcel number under this exemption shall occur only once in a two-year period from the date of the division, regardless of a change in ownership. We really need to modify that to say excepting exemption number two in ten-acre tracks or more.
Or that's, that's not, that's not an exemption.
All right, where we say one division of each parcel of minimum of one acre or more, maybe we should say in a maximum of nine-point-nine-nine acres.
Where, where's the part about the two eight, two years, what'd you say? What, which number was the two years?
Three.
In the division paragraph where we divided the two parcels.
So, you got exemption two and exemption three, and but they're conflict.
And they, they do.
I thought that was in three on the.
Also, there was a division of, was level one, level five conflict. We need also put a.
Have a level five, I mean, three.
Level three, I think.
I guess we can have one of them, too.
So, we may need to get a little more modified.
My opinion, if it's, it's four level, level three, it doesn't prove it's level one.
Cause it met all the criteria, pretty much all of level one.
And it's the cleanest way to do it.
But then it falls under exemption.
This one, that one didn't.
Huh?
That one didn't.
Which one?
The one on Bethany Bowersville.
Oh, okay.
So, I mean, you all have the power and grand variance.
We need to change the ordinance.
If you're going under ten acres or more, no new street or change in an existing street is involved, but next time we start mopping this thing, we probably need to.
So, so.
We need to go and fix it.
So, once we do this, we'll be setting a standard.
No, we need to change the ordinance to correct.
Play the law, why would we be offering a variance off of point three?
I'm not saying you're offering a variance, I just.
No, we don't want to offer a variance.
You have the power and authority, and this isn't.
I think in this situation, it's just exempt, cause it's over ten acres, we're not offering.
That's not awful.
Yeah, I mean, there's no variance to be offered here.
No, I agree, but I think there needs to be clarification in the conflict between exemption two and exemption three.
We need to fix this, I agree with you.
Cause I make a motion that we take this as an exemption in our ordinance.
I'll give you a second.
Any other discussion?
I need to, we need to clarify how we're gonna change the language and fix the, the conflict between exemption two and three, and I think it would be in our best interest to give the attorney time to work on that and bring that back to us next Thursday, that way we have a recommended ordinance change that we can go by and justify what we're doing versus doing it now and going back and changing the ordinance. That way the ordinance would be, we'd have something in writing to go off of, and it can be reflected in the minutes, because we're gonna be faced with these situations again, and that's, I think that's the cleanest way to handle it, guys, cause it will come back to bite.
So, you don't want to go ahead and approve this?
I think we need to get.
We'll do it the way y'all want to do it.
I think we need to get the language on how we're gonna fix, fix the conflict, and then we can get.
If you do the language fix conflict, then we have to create a variance, right?
No, no variance at all.
It would be.
You'd be approving it based on that change in the ordinance.
Well, that's just smooth the way of saying not having a variance.
No, we don't want to give any variances.
I think we need to fix it.
Exception, so.
Yeah, I think we need to fix it first.
Right, but if, we've got something in writing, we know what we're referring back to.
With the exemption, I mean, I, I think we're impeding on our property owners' rights is, is where we're, we have meddled in this area, we've gotten a situation where we're worse off than zoning right now, is what we've created, and, and we've created a muddy mess, and I know we, we definitely need to work on it and clear it up, but, um, I mean, I.
I think if everybody's okay with. I think if everybody's okay with it, we, and you can, Terrell can communicate to them, this is what we're doing. We're just going to fix the conflict and then we'll prove it next week. I see nothing wrong with that.
We got a motion and second. Any other discussion?
So what's the motion again? To just go on and approve it?
Just tell Terrell it's an exception.
Classified under the exemptions is where we're.
You're not accepting.
Exemption. All right.
On what basis? I mean, it needs to be reflected in the minutes.
Exemptions, both exemptions.
Division of land into parcels of ten acres or more with no new street or change in existing street is involved.
I think there needs to be more language added to that, uh, pending the county attorney's resolution of the conflict. It's going to come back to bite you guys. I'm just trying to tell you.
This is all we can go by right now. I mean.
She's, she's corrected. That's why it needs to wait to get that done before we do it. Say, you know, Ms. Kim, how long will it take? When would you have it fixed? Like the next meeting? Right, but we, you would have something in writing for us to have that we could use in the minutes, because you could take that as a first reading at the next meeting. You can't put that in the motion.
There's conflicts on this. This guy's request is not. So that's the way I saw what I looked at this all weekend.
That's what y'all want to do. I'm just telling you. It's going to come back to bite.
We can come, we can go back and amend our ordinance.
Well, I mean, it's the ordinance we've read.
That's what I'm saying. We can amend our ordinance later, but I.
There's a conflict. I'm just trying to clarify it so that going forward, you've got a plan. Right now, you're doing something that you don't have, you know, you have an issue. You don't have the regulatory issue resolved.
Well, I'm just saying, I don't like making rules as we go. I.
That's what you're doing.
Well, no.
That's what we've done on several plats really. I mean, so it's not just this one. I mean, at a point in case we saw one tonight that we never got.
Fixing this starting next.
Well, that's what I'm saying. We fix this next meeting.
All right.
Say, Ms. Kim, does this need to be fixed before or after we vote on it?
We have a motion and a second.
I know we do, but I want to make sure we get it right.
Well, according to that ordinance right here, it says the division of land in the parcel of ten acres or more, uh, is exempt.
But then again, you got exemption three that's totally conflicts it.
Right, you just voted on.
But that, no, that.
And how many others have there been that we haven't seen?
Not yet, but that's all ten acres or greater. This one was a three acre track and it was done first. That's where the problem comes into play.
But you still got three tracks that are greater than three acres.
Ten acres greater, ten acres.
Read exemption three, Marshall.
Huh?
Read exemption three. It says one split in a twenty-four month period of the, the master track. That's where your problem is. He went about this backwards. Had he done the ten acre stuff up front, it'd be a different situation, but he did the three acre one first. It's exemption three.
One division of land into two parcels, each parcel being a minimum of one acre or sufficient size or standards to meet the requirements of health department, whichever is greater.
That's not the new one.
You're not reading the old one.
Keep going.
Number four?
No.
Kim read it while, Kim read it again.
You're, you're reading the old one. Boy, I'll change it.
Yeah, we, we did one more amendment. So the land reference period shall be delineated by its parent slash original tax map and parcel number. A division of a parent slash original tax map and parcel number to include any newly created parcel number under this exemption shall occur only once in a two-year period from the date of the division regardless of a change in ownership. So he's already done that one.
Which was meant for the one acre.
The three acre track, yes.
But the, but that, that third was meant for the one acre at a time.
But the rest of these are also.
He falls in a ten acre exemption.
Under ten acres.
They're exempted.
Yeah.
There's a conflict.
I could see it either way.
Okay.
I think we could fix it.
Take it for a vote and see how you interpret it. I mean, just.
Well, we got a motion, second.
Do you think you could have something next Thursday to resolve this?
You have to have three readings.
I understand, I understand, but at least we have something in writing that we're going to move forward with, is all I'm saying. We have a plan. Right now, we're just granting an exception.
Exemption.
I don't see it as an exception.
It's an exemption, not an exception.
Well, it's not an exception.
It's an exception to, to three, but.
But that's, but that's.
Well, I'm not classified under three.
I understand. It's an exception on three and exemption on two. That's my point.
There's a conflict there and, and that can, that, that's on us.
Guys, basically what, to, to sum it up here is we have created ourselves as a quote unquote zoning board of the county. And by that, we're elected by the people and we are going to have different opinions. And we may interpret something differently. The way, it seems like you guys just had a motion of second and you interpreted as an exemption.
Exemption. Yeah, I do, I do. And I stand, I stand by that.
Any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. Three. Any opposed? Two, three, four, three, uh, two opposed.
It will come back to bite.
We can go back and fix our.
I think we got a lot of things coming by this on the whole ordinance actually. This way above this. All right. Things in the pipeline.
We're down to number thirteen, public comment. Does anyone here like to, uh, speak on any county business? All right. Anyone? Okay. If not, do we have any exigencies? Okay.
There was somebody here earlier I saw outside and said they had something to say about the Melody Farms issue. Uh, I know we can't talk about that, of course, but, because it's not on the agenda, but, uh, there's a stop work on it if you'd like to express that to everybody.
If that's why you're here, I mean, yeah, there has been a stop work order placed on that property. So nothing's being done at, at the moment.
On both of them.
On both of them, yeah. So that's as much as we can talk about it at this point, because, uh, our attorney is giving us advice on it.
We still appreciate all y'all coming.
Yeah.
I told you earlier, it's good to see new faces, isn't it?
All right, Kim, get a motion to, uh.
Motion to adjourn today.
The extension.
You got a second?
For litigation, real estate.
Litigation, real estate and personnel.
Second. Mr. Brown, all in favor? Five o.